One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3A, Lady Montecorro.
Augustine Alley.
Here.
Schmuckel.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Lap.
Here.
McManus here. Joe McManus.
Here. First item tonight is public comment. Don't see any public here at the moment. So, I don't think we have to spend too much time waiting for that, so we'll open and close public comment. Next is review and approval of the agenda. I'd like to add, move everything down one, add an item right now, item three is a, just to talk about drafting a support letter to Traverse Connect. Traverse Connect has asked for a support letter, they're applying for a grant, and Chris can give more detail, but the purpose of that grant is to fund a training for local agencies and municipalities to apply for grants, how to apply for grants, so it's the grant money to teach everybody how to apply for grants. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to add that as three, and then move everything down four, five, and six.
No, it would just be 3A and then 3B.
3A, 3B is fine, we can do that, too.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of 3A.
Support.
Motion made, supported to approve the agenda with the addition of item 3A, Traverse Connect. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So, Chris, I don't know if you want to say anything more than that or not, so.
I think you said it pretty well. They reached out to me last Thursday asking for the letter of support, and I dug up some information that's in this packet. There was a 40-minute webinar that they did for people who were applying, and took screenshots of it. And basically, they just want to seek a grant for funds, and they have to have a match, which they're going to use their own funds for that, they're going to go back out and ask for more money. And it's basically to host training for municipalities, government entities, to how to seek grants, how to write them. So, I think it's worth supporting them in this effort. And, you know, I'm just asking for your support to draft that letter and send it to them, and they need it by the end of the day, unfortunately, they're pretty.
Today?
Today, yeah. And I have the ability to do that with your support.
Yes, this last Thursday, so. And it sounds like they probably have enough letters, ours isn't like a tipping pointer, but it's, I think it would be good to be on record as support.
Absolutely. What do we need to have in this letter, just that we support them?
The letter, I received the template, and basically, it talks about our relationship, it talks about we support the project, and that we feel that it's of value to us and our partners. And it's just, you know, I would say on behalf of the board, we support this, and I sign it at the bottom.
Sounds good to me.
So, you need a motion?
I think so.
That we approve Chris to sign the letter for Traverse Connect in support?
I make a motion that we allow Chris to send a letter of support to Traverse Connect.
I'll second it.
Motion made, supported to have Chris draft the letter on behalf of the town board to support the grant application by Traverse Connect. Any further discussion on that?
I have one question.
Yes.
Does it have to be your signature on it, though? Since you're the supervisor?
I don't know. We'll be dealing with this question a lot.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think because if he's at Sun, if it's on, if we give him authority on behalf of the board, I think it'll, in this case, other times, I'm sure you'd be right.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And I'll include that letter and correspondence for tomorrow's meeting, so you have a copy of it.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, now we're up to interviews, they are scheduled to starting at 4:15, so we have a few minutes here, so. I guess we can, while we're waiting, take time to look through, the questions are in your packet, there are note sheets for each applicant, for you to take notes as we hear answers, and the resumes, if you haven't had a chance to look through them, so. Yes, great.
My plan is to have them introduce themselves briefly, get into the questions, ask all three, ask them to wrap up, and then let the board ask any follow-up questions, that's kind of the plan, if that works for everybody.
Clear introduction, short.
Short introduction. You don't want it to take up all the interview time, right?
Well, some people could go, I don't know.
Okay.
Just explain to them, we're only giving them 15 minutes, so they can.
Good afternoon.
So, we have 15 minutes for this interview today.
Okay.
So, we're just going to try to make your introduction as brief as we can, but if you could just introduce yourself to the board, which they know you. And then we'll go into some questions, have you wrap up at the end, and then we'll ask some questions to follow up.
Okay, my name is Chuck Corham, I am a former supervisor. Have a bit of experience on boards, and I would like to continue to contribute.
All right, first question, what is your motivation in seeking the appointment?
I would like to continue to contribute. I really do feel like I have a lot to offer in terms of the experiences I've had, the knowledge of how things work in this community and attached to communities. And I think I can do a lot for Garfield.
Okay, what knowledge or experience can you bring to the board?
Lots. Just put lots.
A lot.
Few years.
16 years of being on a number of boards, chairing the boards, being the president of organizations, a whole lot of different levels, and different people, and enjoyed every minute of it.
And what is your vision for the township?
My vision for the township? We're, there's a lot of things that, I had a vision for, a lot of them came true, a lot of them are half-done, so I'd like to see, you know, some more things get built out, especially I'd like to see some kind of a network of trails still connect schools, parks, shopping centers, subdivisions. That'd be a biggie.
That's all the questions that I have predetermined. At this point, is there anything that you want to let the board know as they weigh their decision, and then when you're done with that, then they may have some questions to ask you? So, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. As I said, I know everybody here pretty well, I think everybody knows me pretty well. We've had a lot of fun, working together over the years. Molly and Denise, 16 years.
That's a long time.
That's a whole lot.
Longer than some marriages.
Yes, it is. And, no. Maybe it's been a wild ride. With our ups and downs, but we always, how do we do? Hug and make up.
I guess, any questions that the board may have?
So, I have one question, Chuck, this is Lori Lap. Given your many years as township supervisor, then have you given thought in your head how you would adjust from that role to a trustee role? What has been that conversation in your head when you think about that adjustment?
I have thought about that, and I think specifically, I would throttle back, you know, yet become a board member, understanding that the board makes decisions, not individual members, with the exception of the supervisor in certain areas. But it's, it is a different role, and I understand the role.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
That is the exact same question I was going to ask.
Yeah, Molly.
Are there any areas that you think you could help Chris with? We have a new manager position, it's starting out. What kinds of contributions do you think you could make to his job?
I think that there are a number of things, I mean, we have some legal issues right now that there's some background on that I can be helpful in. We've already had a lot of conversations, so we got rough to a good start, and I don't think he has any problem asking me questions. Likewise, I can ask him questions.
I've got a couple, so to spin off on that, do you have any problem with Chris or myself, you know, reaching out and sourcing information from you, assuming you're on the board as a trustee, you're not going to be full-time all the time, but you might, are you willing to, you know, answer those questions and do those things?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I still, the good of the township is still, you know, central in my mind, so if I can contribute, if I can help in any way, I will.
What are the, if there was two items out there, two things, whether they, whether they be obstacles, whether they be opportunities, or maybe another way, what's the biggest obstacle you see in our immediate future as a township, and then what's the biggest opportunity for us? You've got a lot more knowledge and background in some of these things than I do, and others, so are there any two things that come to mind from an opportunity or an obstacle that's out there?
I think it's one and the same, there's an opportunity and obstacle to work cooperatively with the other local communities. In particular, I think the city has proven to be quite a hurdle, but also, there is a big opportunity if they can, they're coming around slowly.
I hope so.
I have one more question for you, Chuck. You had talked about your vision when you joined the township as supervisor many years ago, and some are completed, some are not. One of the ones that you talked about was a network of trails. What other vision had you had that is not yet completed, that you very much would like to see come to fruition?
The east side park is nearing, it's what we want it to be, but it's not there yet.
Okay.
But I think that's pretty well laid out in moving forward. Very happy about that.
Okay.
I'd like to see some kind of a trail network on the east side as well. That's a tricky one. We get a lot of community effort on the west side, and not much on the east side, so that made it difficult.
Okay, any others?
Yeah, we'd like to continue to see the redevelopment of the Barlow-Garfield neighborhood. That would be, that's come a long ways, but there's ways to go.
Anybody else?
Can we ask them what committee you wanted to be on?
Ask whoever you want, I think.
No, I wouldn't do that. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you become a trustee, which committees would you be interested in participating in?
I would like to be on TTCI. I think that's kind of something that I helped birth, and I would think it's very important to develop a relationship with all the other members, and keep that together, and I would be very happy to do that. I think Metro Fire, it would be okay, I'd be, I'd be okay with letting that one go, if there's, but I'd also be happy to serve, because, yeah, a lot of background there. I'd pretty much do whatever you want me to.
Don't say that.
Roll along.
Yeah, roll along. Go show them a sidewalk.
You don't like my hourly rate.
All right, everybody else out there with questions?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right, well, this concludes your interview.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corham, for coming.
How's the hot seat?
Yeah, how's the hot seat?
How was the hot seat, it wasn't too bad?
A little chilly.
Warbed it up.
This is Kelly Fisher, you guys probably remember her at public comment a few weeks ago. So, thank you for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
So, the interview will start out with you telling us a little bit about yourself, briefly, and then we'll go into some questions. We'll let you wrap up at the end, and then the board, any questions that they have for you, they'll ask you at that point.
Okay.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I have lived in the Garfield Township area since 1976. Raised my family here, most of them still live here. I got one daughter that lives down in the Grand Rapids area. I just want to, I just, I want to serve, I want to give back, I would like to, I want to help. That's, that's my main reason for wanting, interested in this position.
All right, now, typically, in opening statements, people answer questions, so I think you've already answered number one, what is your motivation in seeking the appointment?
Just want to help.
Just want to help?
Yep.
In what ways?
Well, I'm pretty commonsensical, very fiscally responsible, and I think that I could be a benefit to, to our township with just good common sense, I pay attention to what's going on around the area, and enjoy lots of it, and I'd like to keep that going.
Okay, what knowledge or experience can you bring to the board?
Well, I've, I've run my own business since 96, here in the township. I've raised children here, I've utilized our, our public assets, and I think that I could be a benefit with making good decisions.
And finally, what is your vision for the township?
Well, I got grandkids now, and so I want to keep it nice for the first one that I have, and a couple more that hopefully are on the way.
How would, so what would you do, then, to make it nice for them?
Well, control growth is a big thing, and in a, in a common sense, good, so, keeping it clean, keeping it family-friendly, stuff like that. I haven't been in an interview in a lot of years, guys, so.
It can be a little stressful.
Getting a little warm in here.
You're in the hot seat.
So, that concludes our predetermined questions.
Okay.
What, if anything, would you like the board to know about you as they consider you for this position?
Well, I'm upstanding citizen, don't have much, if you Google me, you can't find much. I'm pretty well behaved that way. My father was Michigan State Police, my brother, in my introduction last time, and you've got my paperwork there, and I just think that I'm willing to help, I'm willing to learn, everybody's got to start somewhere, you know? I was, I've been reading my trustee handbook that our friend Lynette gave me, and learning about what the job really entails. So, I'm willing to lend a hand and, and help, and, like that, and I have the time for it, so.
Okay, I think we'll, at this point, bring it back to the board for any questions?
I have one question for you, Kelly.
Okay.
You've lived here a long time.
Yes.
And you've stated that you would like it to be the community for your grandkids.
Yes.
In this time that you've lived here, can you name a couple of things that you've noticed that have changed for the better, and also a couple of things from your perspective that have maybe changed for the worse?
Well, parks and rec are definitely better.
Okay.
We've, we've come a long way on that with community areas, and I know we kind of live in a bubble up here, but it feels, it's safe and, and, you know, not scared, like to use the Boardman Lake Trail. I can, I wouldn't do it at night, but I, me and my little dog can certainly do it any time of day, and I feel very comfortable. That's, I think that's one great part about what we've continued to build on positively, what would, what did I think would be change-worthy? Well, lots of people complain about the housing costs and all of that, that's supply and demand, that's, so, that's a, a community concern, I believe. demand, that's, so, that's a, a community concern, I believe. Um, I still feel like it's really safe here, so I don't have any trouble with that, I mean, you can go grocery shopping and not lock your door, you know? It's wonderful. Um, so those are the kinds of things I really appreciate about it, and would like to continue that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Lainey's known me and my family for a lot of years.
Yeah.
Yep, and she knows our history and stuff, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm, Sherry, I think, lives here, right?
Pardon?
Sherry doesn't live in Garfield, does she?
She, no, she lives in Elton, Leland, I, yep, but the rest of us all still are here.
Yep, I knew that.
Should I just ask a question even though Denise is out, or should I wait?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just ask, so, you know, um, from a perspective of, of a Garfield resident, and you, you obviously keep an eye, at least one eye, on the township, you know, as, as a citizen, what do you, what do you, if you, if you don't mind asking this way, you know, what's the, what's the biggest feather in Garfield's hat, uh, of how we've conducted ourselves and what we've done over the years, and, and what's maybe the biggest knock on the township that you might hear or that you might see out there? What, what do you, what do you, do you, do you hear things that, you know, not to put you on the spot, but just what, what, what would you say is a, a biggest asset or feather in our cap, and what's the biggest criticism maybe of, of what we've done?
Well, a, a good recent thing is getting the Cherryland Center getting revived, that's a, that's a really good thing. Um, there's, I know that there's, there's some struggles there with getting everything appropriately in order to get that project more up and running. Um, my daughter, who lives downstate, says, "Mom, you don't know how lucky you are, you can drive less than three miles and be out in the wilderness." You don't, she's gotta drive like twenty miles to be able to get, she says, "You don't know," I didn't, she took it for granted while she lived here, and of course, again, that bubble we live in, that it's, that's a really big asset, is our natural part, and, and making it, um, public-friendly, keeping it public-friendly. I guess the, the negative would be the housing, everybody complains about the housing constantly. Affordable housing, quote-unquote.
Denise, did you have any questions?
No, I did not, thank you.
All right, everybody all set then?
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
Have a good day.
Damn, I did that.
Thanks.
Jessica Brutson, thanks for being here.
Yeah.
Um, so we will start off by allowing you to introduce yourself, I don't know that everybody here knows you, so, you'll have a little time to do that, and then we'll ask you a bunch of questions.
Okay.
And at the end, you'll be able to wrap up, and then the board will ask you some questions if they have some.
Sounds good.
It's kinda like the, the game plan, so why don't you just go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, um, so, as Chris said, my name is Jessica Brutson, I'm a resident of Garfield Township. Um, my husband and I have lived here permanently since twenty sixteen. I am a, uh, real estate associate broker in town, ending my term as president of Aspire North Realtors, um, so that has been an adventure this year. Um, what, I'm constantly serving in the community, um, I've served on Parks and Rec for the county before, um, did a full term there, took time off to do the association president thing, and so this is me getting, hoping to get back involved in local, uh, leadership.
Okay, um, so, first question, what is your motivation in seeking the appointment? You kinda answered a little bit of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I've always had a passion for local leadership, um, since I was younger, I've been involved in it, um, and kind of studied politics for a long time, and how things work and function, and, um, it's just something I have a passion for.
What knowledge or experience can you bring to the board?
Um, served on County Parks and Rec, um, I also, uh, had the pleasure to work in the building with, uh, Lainey in, in the clerk's office, and, um, had a number of conversations with many of the leadership here, so, um, I bring some, some limited knowledge of how Garfield works.
And then what is your vision for the township?
That's a loaded question. Um, Garfield has the potential for responsible community growth, um, we do not have to be the end-all, be-all for everybody's project, but we do have to be open to other opportunities. Um, I do believe that we are in a transition with community government that allows us to reimagine who we are and what we can be and where we can go.
Where do you think we could go? Just to follow up on that.
Um.
Reimagine, and where, where would we go?
One of the things that I've kind of been processing is what do we do with the mall when Macy's closes, because that is one of their flagships, and at that point, we then have a mall who is in the potential for failure and blight, and we don't need that. So what is our opportunity for vision for that property if it does happen to fail? Where can we go with that? So then it's just a matter of understanding what the community needs are and what we could use that for. Um, one opportunity that I've seen that's an issue is year-round sports and practice availability for club teams, not just school teams. So, um, something along those lines would allow us to grow and create a community of inclusion for all age groups.
Okay, um, that wraps up our questions that we had for you. At this point, um, kinda wrap up, and if there's anything that you wanna tell the board why they should consider you for the position, go ahead.
Um, it's kind of one of those, it's hard to say, 'cause I'm generally fairly not, fairly humble, um, but I believe I'd bring a different point of view, um, a fresh point of view, um, it's a different bracket of knowledge and background to allow us to create a really great positive influence.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board with any questions that the board may have. Lori, you're pretty, pretty good with them.
How you doing, Jessica?
Good, how are you?
Uh, so Jessica's a Realtor like me, um, you talked a little bit about responsible growth and housing.
Mm-hmm.
Those kinds of issues. What, what do you see as the role of the township in that? Do you see something more than going through the planning commission? Do you see the township expanding out into low-income housing, for example, or other, other things?
One opportunity, if we could form it correctly, would be to allow the additional dwelling units on personal property with the certain size parcel, but tax that appropriately so that we have, we can still bring in the income that's necessary to continue our projects. Um, there are projects that are something we should consider in the future, um, like Silver Lake is all on septic, but some of those septic, some of those septic tanks are too close to the water table, so what is that going to do to our water source at that point? So if you bring in the extra income with the ADUs, then you can have the finances available in addition to service the community and, and do some repair or, um, other improvements.
I have one question for you, Jessica. Um, you've had the benefit of living lots of places in your life, right?
Yes.
Yes. Um, comparing other places that you've lived to Garfield, how would you say, what are a couple of things that Garfield really excels at, and what are a couple of things where, eh, we could do better?
Don't hold me to that one.
Sure.
So, what, one thing that we enjoy, just in general, and that I've enjoyed, is the fact that Garfield creates really a family-oriented, um, opportunity. They've done, Garfield's done a really great job to make sure that it's open to all with the parks and the recreation that's available and everything, there's something for everyone. Um, could we expand on that? Absolutely. Um, the one thing that I've noticed, and this is just a issue across the board, not just Garfield, is the lack of people wanting to step up into these positions and bring fresh new ideas because they've been told they can't, or it'll never happen, or you're just a dreamer. Um, and I think it's an opportunity for people to step in and learn their role, and then step into it and help guide conversation, even if it takes five years, that's okay. You don't have to seek automatic reward, that's not what this is about. This is about an overarching accomplishment in the end.
And just one other question, this is an easy one, do you plan on residing here for quite some time in the future?
Gosh, I hope so. Yeah, um, my husband's a National Guard, but he's.
Right.
Stationed at Camp Grailing, so hopefully in four years, when he's eligible for retirement, then we're done, and we don't have to worry about deployments or anything like that, so, but yes, we plan on staying here. We talked to my eleven-year-old, and he'll say, "No, we're not going anywhere," so.
Thank you. I guess I'll ask one. What, um, technical skills or people skills or, you know, relationship-building skills do you think you could bring to the board? 'Cause I know you have different organizations that you're part of.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what kind of actual talents could you bring to the board, I guess?
Um, like Lori, I've been in a lot of leadership programs, um, so I've met a lot of wonderful people throughout the state of Michigan and nationally, so I have the ability to kinda do that massive networking that we may need, um, or want to utilize. Um, I've got friends from California to DC and from the UP to Lansing and Detroit, so, um, really, truly, I can't even go to the grocery store in Grand Rapids, let's, you know? It's, it's kind of one of those fun little things that's, that's great, that I know a lot of people, um, but they're valuable relationships, they're not just, "I know you to know you." I've created a lot of, uh, great working relationships that can be beneficial.
When you look at Garfield Township, and you, you've lived here, so it's, I think since sixteen, have you been here since sixteen?
Permanently.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what have, what's the biggest improvement you've seen since sixteen that we've done around the area in Garfield?
The biggest improvement would be our, just our basic infrastructure. We've done a really good job at making sure that we are able to get around town effectively, even though we have more people here, um, it still doesn't take that long to get around, which is awesome, um, and even with all of the work that is done, you don't miss out on much. Um, there's a lot of different opportunities, I think some of the apartments have been great because it's brought workers into town, um, closer to town. I think working with some developers to create a better, uh, community for them, where there's more planning to it and not just a concrete block that goes in, would be one thing that I would work on.
Denise, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay, all right, well, this concludes the interview, and.
Thank you.
We thank you for being here, and I'll walk you out.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Jessica.
First, you're hitting that. And I guess I'll throw it to the board. I mean, we've got this on our agenda to deal with tomorrow. So, I mean, what do you, how do you want to approach this? Do you want to, on your own, go through your notes and rank the candidates? How, how do you want to handle this? I don't think we were going to make the decision tonight.
I thought we were.
We can. We can, if we, it's up to us.
Well, if we can't, I mean, if you guys are comfortable doing that, Molly's got, we got, I didn't know how we want to handle it, so.
We've got 45 minutes.
Okay.
Woo, you go, girl.
All right.
I just want to say, all it takes to appoint somebody is just someone to make a motion, support it, and then they just need a majority vote, so. But we should have discussion first. But I just wanted to say, I read up on, and that's all that it takes, so.
That's all it does take.
I mean, does anybody want to kick off or, I mean...
Would it help if we ranked ordered them again like we did last time? Because we may all just come up to the same conclusion, did it?
Yeah. I think, yeah. I'm, I'm good with that. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. I don't know if that would be our...
I'm not.
You're not?
It's fine.
Just have discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to have it public.
I don't know who...
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. We need to have it public, since we're being taped right now. And what our discussion is...
I'll kick off, since nobody's jumped right in. As I approached this and we looked, I, you know, I, the areas that I found important were, A, you know, did, did somebody try to seek office and interest in, in serving before the opening came up? Number one. And number two, experience to me is, is important. And then third, and I think that when you guys were filling Chris's position, you used the term "fit in." You know, will the person fit in and, and work well with the rest of the board as we move forward? So, and, yeah, to me, I, I, I have my candidates, candidate in particular that I would like. I think that I'd like to hear from everybody, see what you have to say. But in, bearing in mind, like I said during one of our intermissions, is we're filling a two-year term. You know, we're not, we're not electing the next president. We're not, even the vice president. We're filling two years. So, the person will be here for two years, have to run in two years. And anybody we don't pick can run in two years. If they really have an interest in serving and they're not picked tonight, they can run in two years and try to, try to get on the board at that point in time. So, those are just some points that I, that I approach this process with.
I would have to agree with you. One of the two factors that I was thinking of is the people that have actually ran for the positions. And we have two of them that have, did run for those positions. And we got the experience, you know, the compassion for the community and the growth. You know, and then again, we have one of them that's been living here since '76, which is a good asset, too. I think all of them would bring something to this board, I really do.
Short for you.
Yeah.
Well, you're right. And there are things with each of these candidates that I really liked. My interest has been, we have a new manager's position. I like having the experience that Chuck has, that he can bring back, both for you as supervisor, new position, and you as manager. And when you start getting into the technical stuff, DPW and those kinds of things, and, you know, our water and our sewers and our, all those, those sorts of things that he's served on, I think there's a wealth of knowledge, and I think it would be beneficial to have that. So, that's me.
I mean, I do appreciate Chuck's knowledge and experience. You know, he's a really good reference for the history and what's gone on. But I also see the value in a new perspective and, and a fresh look. You know, and also, we're trying to encourage new leaders to come into these positions. And this is a good opportunity. When you're appointed, you can learn and then run and get involved in a different way than, you know, while Jessica did run, but Kelly didn't. Some people, it's intimidating to them to put their name in to run.
Politics, yeah.
Right. But if you're an incumbent by being appointed, it can make things a little bit easier. But, so, I, I am kind of torn. I, I do see Chuck does have a history with the township that I don't know was always positive. So, that's my perspective. I think we're at a turning point where fresh perspectives could be really good for this township. I don't want to say too much more about it, but, you know, I, I do believe that, you know, we're headed in a new direction, not necessarily totally different, but there's things, exciting things on the horizon. Garfield has a lot of potential. And we have great, we have a great board. We have a great community, great staff. You know, we have every, all the ingredients for greatness. So, I'm excited about something new and exciting and fresh. So, that's my perspective.
I agree with Chloe on many of her points. I do think giving a higher level of thought to those who actually did run initially, so between Chuck and Jessica, who both put their name in the hat initially, gives them a leg up in my perspective because they took that initiative to run publicly. And I do agree with, with Chloe on bringing some outside perspective to our community. It's easy to be here for a long time, and this is how it is. And I do think Garfield Township, we're at a very pivotal point where we can grow and we can, we are growing. How we manage that growth and how we plan for that growth is going to be very important. However, with Chris being very new to his role and Joe being very new to his role, I think the historical knowledge that Chuck brings, to me, is invaluable at this time.
I agree with all of you.
Oh, you can't sit on the fence, you got nothing.
I, I, okay, I know all of these people. And they would all be good on the board in a different way, serving different ways. But I also think that Chuck's knowledge and his experience in what the new thing is, is invaluable. I really do. The history, things that are coming up in Garfield, he's got knowledge of it all. Not that Jessica or Kelly couldn't be brought forward, but I think that, and they both have great perspectives, I, I really do. But right now, I agree with, with you, Lori. Right now, his knowledge is invaluable.
I'd be curious if the, you know, depending on which way we go, if people we don't choose, if we can get them involved in some of these boards. Seems like we still had some board positions, some committee positions that were open. You know, I don't know which ones, but even Planning Commission, I know we, I expect we'll probably have, we filled one this year. I'm expecting that probably in the next couple of years, we're going to have another couple of openings on the Planning Commission. And those are, that's a great, it's a, it's an important place, but it's a great place to start. You learn, you know, Molly's, well, just a couple of years into the Planning Commission, but been an absolutely great Planning Commissioner, and I'm glad we're sticking with her for next year.
So, like she just said, learning. Because I mean, it's two years in learning with any of these people who'd be willing to sit on any of the boards would be great.
And I do agree with Chloe about new perspective, but I'm glad we have, we have some. We've got Lori here, who's a, who's not only new perspective, she's a Democrat for the first time on this board in this board's history. I mean, we're, we're a partisan board, and we've got a Democrat on for the first time.
And we still get along.
In the township.
So far.
Yeah. And, yeah, I've got a lot of experience with the township. Obviously, I served on this board from 2000 to '08 in Planning Commission years, different things. But in the, in the supervisor seat, I'm still learning. So, from a selfish standpoint, I, I, I think that having the knowledge for Chris and I is important. But I'm, you know, let the board hash it out. And again, I think we're, you know, and you're right, Chloe. Once you're appointed, you're, you know, you've got a shoe in, and Laney did, and you did. You know, you were both, you were both appointed initially, and now you've run and been reelected. So, that's not, that's, that is a true statement, and we've benefited from that. So, so I've, you know. Denise, we started with you. Do you want to come back to you, or you...
No.
Okay.
I'm still on the fence.
How about you, Chris? Any perspective from our manager over there?
That's right, I never thought...
You should have filled in the conversation.
You know, I, I thought, well, the fact that this person's going to be my future boss, it probably shouldn't weigh in a ton. Maybe there'd be a little bit of conflict. But you bring up valid points. You know, everybody does here. And, you know, what Joe and I knew, the thing that resonates the most with me is, you know, selfishly, we have a little closer support with somebody who has served in that role and, you know, in the past or has some experience. You know, change is good, too. I feel like change is good.
I think you guys need to have confidence in yourselves, though. You know, you guys are going to do great. You know? When Jean left, I thought I'd be calling her every day. And, I mean, I still talk to her, but...
But I don't think it's confidence. I've never lacked confidence. Everything I've done, but... No, but I know, but it's the knowledge. It's the, it's the, oh, yeah, well, I, you know, I dealt with that person. Here's, here's a lookout when you're dealing with that person. Well, here's, and, and I don't disagree that Chuck has ruffled feathers, but I think if you're in this seat, you're going to ruffle feathers. I expect that I'll be ruffling feathers, not to the extent maybe other people did. But, but i- if it's a ruffling of feathers, it's to defend and stand up for what's right for this township. We've got to understand, you know, we, we don't want to be driven in, in, we don't want to be in the backseat of the bus, we want to be driving the bus. And, and I think that's important. But no, it's, it's a good, it's all good points, so.
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Chuck Corn as our trustee.
I would second that, Lori.
All right. Motion was made and supported to appoint Chuck Corn to fill the next two years of the open trustee position on the Charter Township of Garfield Board and subsequently, the, the position that will be on the ballot in 2026? Any more discussion on that? I think we need to do, we need to do roll call votes.
Roll call vote. McVannas, yes? Lamp?
Yes.
Augustine Alley?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
John McVannas?
Yes. All right. Let's see if we can get Chuck sworn in and invite him to the meeting tomorrow night. As well, have him, have him jump right in. Okay. Public comment? Don't have any. So, with that...
I have something.
Yeah, where it at?
And I, I don't mean to be mean on this, but, and I know on the closed session meeting the other day was open to the public. And at the end, when Jennifer was giving her public comment, under Robert's Rules of Orders, we could not discuss things with her. I felt very uncomfortable at that meeting because that was actually against Robert's Rules of Orders. We can't do it here at a public meeting now. We shouldn't have been able to do it in there. So, that's my thought, my, my, my thought.
Good point. Good point. If there was any difference, it's the fact that she's our agent, she's our...
I understand that, but it was under public...
It was under public comment.
She could have done it under other business.
Yeah.
That would have been fine, but not under public comment.
And we do occasionally refer answered questions above a comment, but we did probably get beyond that.
No, no, we don't. We never do.
We have at the town...
You're the supervisor, you probably could, but...
Yeah, we've never done that.
No, I know, I know, it's not good, right? We don't like to do that, but it's a... Good point. Thank you for that. Lesson one. It was a great conversation, though.
Yeah, I know, but...
All right. Anything else for the good of the order, Chris?
I sent out an email regarding the Cub Scouts wanted to meet with an elected official to earn a badge. So, on Wednesday night, Jason Allen is going to bring his troop here at 6:30. I told him that if one of you wanted to do it, great. If not, then I would take care of it. So, either way, I could commit to it. So, I just need to know if you, if anybody has interest.
When are you doing this?
It's at 6:30 on the 11th, which is this...
Molly happens to have a meeting here at 7:00 on Wednesday, I'm sure she...
We have planning in here.
She'll be here.
I, I know, and ain't Molly.
No, I mean, if you, if you could be here a little early for the planning...
I mean, just kind of half hour early.
If she can't do it, I could come back over, but I didn't know. Since you're going to be here Wednesday for the meeting, I don't know if you minded meeting with her.
You don't want to come back out in the snowstorm, maybe you want to...
Well, that's true. Couldn't come tomorrow night, could you?
Well, what does he specifically want?
So, what, what is it, what's the purpose of the elections? You know, like you're, you're running for office. That's pretty much it, and then just ask questions.
That's a clerk's answer. What's the position of the office and the election process? I mean, I can... Sure.
You could do it.
6:30. The election process, what's the question?
It's not necessarily the process, like, I, so he didn't go into great dissertation about exact details, but, you know, what is it to run for office? Why would you want to run for office? What is the importance of it? So, those are the things that I would, I would cover.
He wants me to fire him up?
They're Cub Scouts, they probably have a...
They have to earn certain...
Earn a badge.
Well, it's kind of like at the Planning Commission, we have often, you may have it at the Town Board level, to have a witness that where the students come in, and they sit through a Planning Commission meeting, and we have to sign off, and they get credit in one of their classes. I'm sure it's something along that lines.
Exactly what it is. So, how about by the end of tomorrow night's meeting, if somebody has interest, let me know.
Or she'll... Tell them I'll be here at 6:30.
Okay.
She'll be here anyway. If something falls through, let me know. I could easily come over here.
Okay.
I've got four-wheel-drive pickup, I can drive back over.
Might have to pick me up.
Not that smart. Yeah, maybe, shuttle people home. Anything else? All right, we'll stay on the journey then.
See everybody tomorrow night.
Yes.